Check, check, check.
And you know how to use it.
One, two, three.
You can leave it on the whole time or turn it off. You know how to use it. And it will be on tomorrow.
Oh, I've been asking to do that for the past few years. It hasn't worked. They don't listen to me. Maybe you have some influence.
Testing, testing. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Forum for Candidates Running in the Upcoming Election for the Ninth Ward City Council Seat. My name is Mary Keefe Kelly. I'm a member of the League and on the team for Voter Services. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization dedicated to promoting the active and informed participation of citizens in government. The League of Women Voters neither endorses nor opposes candidates for public office. We want to thank the city and Clerk Mendoza for providing the space and services for today's forum, and we want to recognize our volunteers, especially the Evanston Township High School students that you'll see in the back, for helping us out today. Our moderator today is Josie Yangworth. Josie lives outside of Evanston and has no interest in this race. That always gets a laugh. Josie has been a member of the League of Women Voters of Chicago for over 15 years. She has participated on various committees for the League, including education and diversity. Josie is also director of the Illinois Resource Center, a not-for-profit organization that works in tandem with the Illinois State Board of Education, providing professional development and technical assistance to educators who serve pre-K to 12th grade students who are in bilingual and English as a second language programs. So without further ado, Josie?
Thank you, Mary. And it's a lovely honor to be here in Evanston in person moderating. My previous experiences were doing moderation, moderating Zoom sessions, so this is much nicer, so thank you. Just a couple of ground rules that I want to cover for, for audience participants. As Mary mentioned, this is a nonpartisan event, so therefore we ask that no campaign buttons be worn by people inside here in the forum, nor any kinds of campaign signs, nor any kind of clothing or accessories related to campaigns to be worn or otherwise displayed here in the forum. I'm going to be responsible for enforcing the time limits, and I may interrupt proceedings to enforce the ground rules in format which both candidates have agreed to. I'm going to ask the audience to please refrain, hold your applause, and refrain from making comments until the end of the forum. And of course, there'll be an opportunity for you to speak to the candidates after the forum. Before this forum took place, there was a rather awkward coin toss on my part, determining who would speak first, and Mr. Jia Karras won the coin flip. So he will be speaking first and will be given two minutes to give his opening statement, and then Ms. Hayes will then have an opportunity to speak at that point. As audience members, I ask you to please consider submitting questions to both candidates on index cards that can be handed to the ushers here in the room. Your questions will be screened for duplication and for appropriateness, and please remember that the questions must be aimed at both, both candidates and not to any one individual. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question, and that will be alternating back and forth as to who will be answering the question first. Then, at the end, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement, and that will be in reverse order of the opening statements. And candidates are not allowed to use any visual aids for display. And finally, as we've said, we have volunteers here who'll be having paddles showing us the time, how many seconds left for the candidates. So for example, we're seeing one that says 30 seconds, then the next one will say 15 seconds, and then I think there's a big red one that says stop. So often when I see stop, it's often when I start then interrupting and thanking the candidates for their comments. So, and since I'm, since that's one of my roles. So, I think without any further ado then, I, by my count, it's 3:07. So, and I, and I assume we're going to be ending in about an hour, so at around 4:07 or so. So let's start with opening statements from Mr. Jia Karras.
Hello. My name is Juan Catacatis. My pronouns are he, him, his, L. I'm the current Ninth Ward Council member. I've lived and worked in Evanston for just under 30 years, and I've lived in the Ninth Ward since 2007. As a community member, I'm a founder and vice president of Evanston Latinos, a nonprofit formed during the pandemic to serve and advocate for our Latinx and immigrant communities. I've served in PTA leadership at Oakton Elementary as the vice president, the two-way immersion liaison, and the garden chair. I'm also on the board of Next Steps Evanston. We provide diversity and inclusion training and anti-racism training and programming to D-65 parents and guardians. I'm the founder of Evanston Skates, a skate park advocacy group that, that has worked to make the pop-up skate park at Ridgeville and the city's upcoming twig skate park possible. I'm honored to be the first Latino council, city council member. I want city government to be better, to better serve all residents, and I think I've brought about positive change in that direction. I'm the only current council member to actively share their meeting notes and their voting record. Ninth Ward meetings have Spanish-to-English interpretation and are recorded and posted on the city's YouTube channel. My first legislative referral was ranked choice voting, and 85% of Evanston agreed that they wanted it too. We will be the first city in Illinois to have RCV in 2025. I also initiated the city's reproductive rights proclamation to make sure that the city could, would do everything it could to protect the privacy and reproductive rights of Evanston residents. I'm currently working on the following projects: adding an equity scorecard, scorecard to legislative referrals, fair notice for renters, and a program to facilitate climate action. As you can see, I'm someone who gets things done, done, and I'm, I'm excited to continue my work.
Thank you very much. Opening statement, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming this afternoon, and to our wonderful Juan, who's been here to greet us with his opening statements. My name is Kathleen Hayes. I thank the League of Women Voters for putting together this forum to help educate the community. The reason why the League of Women Voters does this as an educational tool is because education is the one thing that is going to help all of us get to the next level and balance that we need here in this city. I am a born and raised Evanston resident. I go back about five generations here with my family, and we have been committed to Evanston most of our life. As an adult, I have been able to be a public servant for over 24 years with Cook County Government, first in the prosecutor's office and then at Echo County Hospital. So diversity is an action word that keeps us all together and keeps us aware of the needs of all of our neighbors, no matter where they reign from. I'm committed to working with all types of institutions and individuals to make sure that we all are able to live the prosperity that we are entitled to do. This is an issue that are come, that's coming up in our country about equity and, and equality. Those are words that we cannot take lightly and have to continue to work on. I have been in many different organizations. I have been endorsed by others, and we'll talk more about that as I'm sure this forum goes along. But I am very grateful to be here and very thankful for you all putting this together.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. All right. So first question will be to Ms. Hayes. What do you believe are the top three challenges that the city of Evanston faces today?
Thank you. One of the top three challenges has been the budget. People have talked about, and endlessly about, the issues regarding the budget and how it facilitates the values as well as the needs of the citizens of the Ninth Ward and all of Evanston. We have got to figure out how to be fiscally responsible and articulate that to all residents so they know and understand how their services, as well as their taxes, are being facilitated and needed across the area. We are dedicated to having people work with and work for this, this institution. Evanston's a beautiful city, and we want to make sure that people are being able to reach their highest potential as the city is a support for all new and old residents that come into the ward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jia Karras, same question. What do you believe are the top three challenges that the city of Evanston faces today?
I think personally, some of the biggest challenges that I want to be involved with directly solving are the affordable housing piece. I think affordability for residents is a big topic that I hear, and that's, you know, we need affordable housing for people that want to come live here in Evanston. I hear a lot that, you know, I have, you know, people say like, my son, my daughter would love to live here, but they can't afford it. I also hear that residents on a fixed income are having problems staying here. So that's one thing I want to, I want to tackle. We also have to do a lot more work on climate action. We have to be, this is a problem that everyone is experiencing, and unfortunately we don't have a blueprint of how to do that. So we have to be forward-thinking and creative in, in the ways that we not only address climate and renewable energy with city operations, but also help facilitate homeowners to also have solar and, and those things there. And also Kathy pointed out the financial thing. We have, I was proud that we voted to fully fund the firefighter and the police pension, and I think that will go a long way to fiscal responsibility.
Thank you very much. All right. So question number two is going to be for Mr. Jia Karras. What issues specific or unique to your ward need to be addressed by the council?
So what I'm finding is, you know, you look at the ward map, and the wards look relatively small, but there are micro neighborhoods. And so when you go around and talk to people, you really don't know what the problem is on, you know, the 1800 block versus the, you know, 600 block. It can change. So I think it's super important to talk to people. One of the things I've been really working hard on is cleaning up some of the kind of environmental justice issues in the west part of the ward. So if, for folks that live near Hartree and Pittner, there are, you know, garages that they get, like, you know, fumes and gases from the spraying chemicals. I know my predecessor cleaned up one of the businesses that was burning pallets and tires. Currently, I'm working with Aldi, and they've agreed to put in a fence so that garbage doesn't blow in the neighborhood. And that's something that, you know, you wouldn't know unless you lived within a three or four block radius. And then there are other things. Some of our constituents on the, what would be the north side of the ward that live next to Crown, there's some parking issues that come up, and that's something that you wouldn't know unless you've lived right there. And so I think it's really important to listen to people and also make yourself available and come up with creative ways to fix problems.
All right. Thank you very much. Same question, Ms. Hayes. What issues specific or unique to your ward need to be addressed by the council?
Many of the issues that Juan has brought up is very accurate. We have a microcosm in the Ninth Ward from neighborhood to neighborhood. We kind of live in little clusters. However, one of the bigger issues is that because of the issue of affordability, people have been leaving the ward, and we're approximately 1,000 people down in the ward. So the remap is going to be of great importance as we go into the summer and spring years, seasons that are coming up. There are issues regarding that back Pittner area in which there was some environmentally challenged issues going on. There are parking issues regarding Crown. But we're up for more issues as they come for the building of other institutions throughout Evanston and the ripple effect that that will have, as well as the ripple effect that losing so many businesses have had. The Ninth Ward does not have a business district. That business district is one of the things that keeps communities alive and thriving. So there are many challenges that the council is going to have to face within the next few months.
Thank you very much. The third question now will be for Ms. Hayes. When budget time rolls around again, what additional sources of revenue would you support, and what cuts to current programs would you support to help balance the budget?
The budget is such a tricky thing. It, it's very fluid, so you have to see it to know exactly what you're cutting, where you're cutting, and how that's going to affect not just one budget, but the generations that go down the line. Funding the first responders is absolutely, was absolutely essential, and it came through much discussion. Line items are cut when services can no longer be provided. Those services are what the taxpayers have come to Evanston to receive. So unfortunately, you'd have to actually see the line items as they are and how they are intermeshed with other services that come and are provided by Evanston. So some of the things that had come up in this past budget was issues such as how much are we spending per square foot for different entities that are coming to be built up here in Evanston. So other questions were, well, how are we going to revive the economic development portion of Evanston so that people come back to Evanston? There is, seems to be a lot of issues that are up, and you actually have to have the budget in hand to know what to cut.
Thank you very much. Same question from Mr. Jia Karras. When budget time rolls around again, what additional sources of revenue would you support, and what cuts to current programs would you support to help balance the budget?
So some of the things that were talked about last fall when we looked at the budget, some additional sources of revenue, I think we should look into certain things such as the parking at Crown. One of the good ideas, I thought, one of my colleagues had, I think it was Councilmember Burns, was to park, have parking fees for out-of-town guests and not Evanston residents. I know that Parking right now is doing a survey to see who actually is parking there, because, because it's, because it's free now, we just don't really check. And that's something I initiated in the past couple of weeks to have them go look and see who exactly is using these services. We found that on the, on the, on the beach side, we have similar, a similar situation where you have to pay if you're an out-of-town guest, and that actually covered the cost of the, what we'd usually receive from the beach tokens. So looking at things like that, where we probably have to cut the most are the capital projects. I know this past year, we had really in-depth and tough discussions about what not to do. And some of that, you know, we had too many things on the plate where we actually probably did not have enough staff to actually lead those projects. So things like aid and social services are things I would not want to cut, but I think capital improvements are where we probably have to look closer and see.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next question for Mr. Jia Karras. What specific steps do you think the city council could take to further equity and inclusiveness in Evanston?
Well, hopefully they will pass my referral for the equity scorecard. I, you know, have colleagues that sit on the equity and equity committee, and one of the things I learned when we had discussions is like, by the time things come to city council, they're pretty much fully baked. They've been, been worked on for months, and it's really hard to make any equity-related changes. One of the things we worked out was, was to add the step of the referral coming to the Equity and Empowerment Commission and just, you know, putting their scorecard and, and giving direction to where, you know, we're not meeting our equity needs. And I think that once, if this gets passed, would be a big step into at least cleaning up like our referrals. So we do think of equity when we're implementing things. I also think, I know City Manager Stowe is committed to hiring a equity, equity and inclusion director, and I think he also wants that person to have real power in the city. And so that's an exciting thing that's coming soon, hopefully.
Thank you very much. Same question, Ms. Hayes. What specific steps do you think the city council could take to further equity and inclusiveness in Evanston?
One is to work with other organizations that have best practices that have been outlined and applied to other municipalities. Having a director come in to, via Mr. Luke Stowe, is a wonderful idea, but he was going to, he or she is going to need support, not just one person. Equity is a very wraparound issue that has to be infused in everything you do on a daily basis, from customer service all the way up to final votes and decisions. The good move was to put equity at the beginning before things come to council and to see if they pass mustard. But the education for everyone in the city as, as public servants, as well as outside of the city as residents, needs to be educated regards to the issues of equity. My hope is that we will study those best practices and bring forth some great new ideas that energize the community and it not just be a buzzword for other folks to get around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next question for Ms. Hayes. Would you support changes to the zoning codes that would allow for more types of housing in single-family residential districts, or that would reduce or eliminate parking requirements for new development? Or would reduce or eliminate parking requirements for new development?
There seems to be a trend that is going on that developers believe that people will only rent for the next 25 years. People want to own homes and understand spaces. People who own homes want to be able to park in or near their home for a variety of reasons: children, visibility issues, convenience. My hope is that we will upgrade the code, which I know has been needed for decades, to be addressed and looked at, and that those codes will reflect comfortability and mixed living capabilities for everyone, whether you are young, old, single, family, children, or not. Those codes could be the key for us being able to bring people back into Evanston to live the quality of life that they are reaching for in other areas. People want to be here in Evanston. It's a good community that brings trees and schools and everything else together. But it's very difficult when you have a limited land-based source. So we have to get unique and understand what's necessary to make those codes efficient for everyone on a balanced basis.
Thank you very much. Same question from Mr. Jia Karras. Would you support changes to the zoning codes that would allow for more types of housing in single-family resident, residential districts, or that would reduce or eliminate parking requirements for new development?
Absolutely. That's actually one thing that I'm really excited to dive into on the Housing and Community Development Committee. There are other communities that have eliminated the housing restrictions for, and done away with, single-family R1, and they've seen that that facilitates kind of a slow growth of two flats, three flats, and apartment buildings interspersed with, in neighborhoods where you have single-family homes. One of the other things that I think with the parking, the parking requirements, especially near public transportation, when you talk about transit-oriented developments, what we've found is, you know, right now, the way our code is, is written, we have to have variances to have less parking. And because of those variances, those buildings have to lease parking spots at our city parking facilities. And we found that, you know, even though we're making the, making these developers lease 20 spaces, that the residents who live there don't use those spaces because they like being next to public transportation. So that's absolutely something that we can roll back those parking requirements because it costs just as much to, to build one floor of parking as it does to do one floor of housing.
Thank you very much. All right. Next question will be for Mr. Jia Karras. What actions, if any, do you think the city council should take to support the business community, especially small businesses?
Well, I think we have a lot of the ARPA money that we spent. I think bringing Northlight's Theater to downtown is going to be hopefully a big boon to the restaurant industry. I think making some of these zoning changes so that we have more density downtown also can bring more retail, more, more customers for the restaurants. One of the things we're seeing is that because of the pandemic, we don't have as many people downtown for work. And so we're not seeing that foot traffic. And I think that's, you know, at the heart of a lot of the, the issues with economic issues in the downtown area. I mean, we also, you know, facilitated the, the OX. We gave our money to the OX, which I think is an exciting thing to bring to the neighborhood. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Same question, Ms. Hayes. What actions, if any, do you think the city council should take to support the business community, especially small businesses?
The one thing in working with small businesses, because I believe small businesses are the heartbeat of any community, whether it's Evanston or anywhere else. The pandemic has wreaked a lot of problems with people being having, being able to maintain their business, and so many businesses here in Evanston have closed. The one thing that we really need to do is have good conversations and open communications with the business community. And talking with them, some of their issues were issues regarding walkability, safe streets, beautification, being able to have people come and make this a tourist spot where people want to be, having events and activities that surround and engulf them so that they can have people to come in and shop with their stores and see what they're about. Unfortunately, we have not had a two-way conversation with a lot of our business community, and their issues are wide in variety because they want to stay here and live here in Evanston. They want to work in Evanston, and they want to hire Evanston people to work for them. This is the opportunity for our businesses to model what, what entrepreneurial systems are like for many different people. So my hope is that we will have an open communication with them so that they can learn from us as much as we can learn from them and support them financially as well as value-wise.
Thank you very much. All right. Next question from Ms. Hayes. In what ways and how often will you communicate with your constituents? Will you have in-person ward meetings?
The quick answer is absolutely. We are now starting to get to a level where people are a little bit more comfortable with coming out and seeing and meeting each other. The whole The whole thing about community is that person-to-person exchange. Many times, as I've said many times before, whether we need to have a meeting at the jewel, as you see me going with my toilet paper to the car, whenever you need me, you need to talk to me. Some people don't like to be in public places for many health and challenging reasons, mobility reasons, traffic reasons, scheduling reasons. So my goal is to not only have in-person meetings, but also have the ability for those who are willing to commune with the rest of the residents in-person activities that they would share in. Lastly, everyone has a lot of stuff to do. We all have all these checklists that we go down each and every day. So my hope is to have a communication source in which they can be mailed information so that they can have it at hand as a resource. And finally, the fact that we will also be able to provide the Zooms for those who are not able to come out and are shut in and want to come and learn more, and special meetings that they may hold themselves that invite me to come to, to speak on, or special guests for interests that they have in the area.
Thank you very much. Same question for Mr. Joe Harris. In what ways and how often will you communicate with your constituents? Will you have in-person ward meetings?
So currently I do not have in-person ward meetings, pretty much because of COVID. Also because what I've found is a lot of people can't necessarily make whatever times work for everyone. So that's why I have those recorded and put on the city's YouTube page. I've also started to have more informal kind of working meetings with the small neighborhood groups to kind of tackle like neighborhood problems. And that's something I've kind of shifted to recently. I've also, with the communication, we have a limited bandwidth for our staff to do newsletters and updates. But I've worked with them to agree to do weekly, bi-weekly updates that are a little bit shorter. And that's where I share my, what I used to share strictly on social media, so I'll share those in my email list for the Ninth Ward, and that comes out every two weeks. But I'm always open to a meeting with people. I always get like a lot of emails about, hey, can we talk about this? And I do those in-person meetings when asked, so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next question will be for Mr. Joe Harris. Discuss your plans and/or hopes for neighborhood business districts, especially the main/demster mile.
Okay. Well, currently, that's not in the ward, but I think as far as the main dumpster mile, I mean, one, I know that we have a lot of construction going on, which is a source of great consternation for the businesses there. I know that we are doing, there's been a lot of talk about Custer Street. I'd like to continue allowing like Los Principales to have their outdoor dining there. I think that's one thing that I think moving forward, we need more walkable and pedestrian streets. We could possibly do that also on, in, on Ovington downtown. Those are all things we have to look at with hopefully our new transportation mobility coordinator. But yeah.
Thank you very much. Same question, Ms. Hayes. Discuss your plans and/or hopes for neighborhood business districts, especially the main/demster mile.
Mr. Harikais is exactly right. That is not in the ward at this point in time. One thing might help is if we get the remap and it, parts of it is, becomes part of the ward. There is a lot of construction that is going to literally come within this season because everything got pushed back for two years because of COVID. So we're going to need our business people to be patient with us and to be inventive with us as to how they can still create and generate funds and have sales and include people. Many of them have suggested that maybe we need to start doing pop-ups in other areas where construction is not so that people can have access to their wares and their services. Some have talked about collaborating with other businesses to do inventive things and unique shows. Others have talked about possibly closing down for a little while. So there's a wide variety of things that might happen. My hope is that we will work collaboratively with them to come and create new ways to do fairs and festivals so that they can get the sales generated that they need to maintain and sustain. We can't lose any more businesses. They are a big tax revenue for this city, and we need to embrace them and help stand them up so that they can survive this as well.
Thank you very much. So the next question will be from Ms. Hayes. What are the most important steps the council should take to advance the goals of the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan? And please be specific.
Some of the goals are, one is to educate the citizenry about exactly how that process rolls out. It rolls out in stages and people need to be able to understand what that means. If we are talking about having access to sustainability and environmental sustainability, when we're talking about this new development that comes throughout the city and some of the old development, it takes time. We need to be able to understand the timetable that is going to be involved in these intricate works. We need to understand what's first, second, and third, what the process is, and how it will affect and have long-term range on not only just one neighborhood, but the entire city, that it is not just a single focus, that it is a multiple focus, so there are many moving parts.
Thank you very much. Same question for Mr. Joe Harris. What are the most important steps the council should take to advance the goals of the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan? And please be specific.
So currently, we're actually doing really well on our trajectory to be carbon neutral. But one of the big things that, the way we're getting there is actually through renewable energy credits, which is not actually moving the needle as much as it should. So even though we're buying renewable energy, we're not creating renewable energy. So one of the things that we are working on, the new animal shelter will be solar-ready. Our sustainability director is working on a project to put solar there and also on Crown. But even if the city gets to being carbon-neutral on our facilities and sites, that does not include all the residents. And so we have to be really proactive in helping facilitate like small homeowners to get to be more energy-efficient. We have a one-stop-shop program that is going to help retrofit low- to medium-income homes and get them solar-ready, also more energy-efficient. We have to have more programs like that to help facilitate homeowners to do their part as well.
Thank you very much. So the next question will be for Juan Joe Harris. Are there any procedural changes that you would suggest to increase the efficiency and the effectiveness of the council?
Well, one of the things I pride myself on is that I talk to everybody on council. I think a lot of times, me personally, when I have a piece of legislation, I have talked to everyone and made sure that everyone is either on the same page or that we, you know, have talked about it. So when we're here at council, there's not any surprises, I guess. I think, I know we have something coming up that will add two co-sponsors, you have to have two co-sponsors for any referral, so that we're, we have legislation that has support. I know we have limited staff time, and I think that's something we have to be mindful of.
Thank you very much. For Kathy Hayes, same question. Are there any procedural changes that you would suggest to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of the council?
One of the main things, and it's difficult to do with lack of staff, is to have a council that's able to communicate well with its constituents. Many of the constituents feel that the questions and the curiosities that they have go absolutely nowhere, which is not really the case. Many times their references get put out there, but due to lack of staff and hiring and limitations, people cannot respond to it as quickly as some would like. I think one of the main things when you deal with the community on a regular basis and trying to communicate better with them is to articulate to not only your council members, but the staff what the perimeters are. Unfortunately, the staff has been many times put in the middle of issues that should have been addressed by the council. Secondly, I would hope that the council would put together their study or all of their facts to not only display to the residents, but to the staff so clear directions can be given and that they can address those issues that may come up. Whether you have one person on an ordinance, because it's not a bill, or two, is really irrelevant if you can't articulate it to the masses.
Thank you very much. All right, next question will be for Ms. Kathy Hayes. What is your stance on the Fair Work Week ordinance?
That's a big one. You know, workers need to be treated, very simply put, workers need to be treated fairly. Workers need to be treated with dignity and honesty as everyone should be, whether you're a worker, a customer, or an entrepreneur. Entrepreneurs are also workers. They need to be able to address the issues that they have in their shop. And if they go outside of the boundaries of people's liberties, they need to be challenged on it. However, this city has many different ways to bring people into the fold. And one of those ways is to sit down with businesses as well as workers to understand and support some of the initiatives that the Fair Work Week is articulating. So if you want people to have schedules and things like that, you might need to support the small business in teaching them how to make that happen. If you want people to be able to know their rights and issues, you might have to sit down and teach small businesses how to do that in an honest and fair way and support them in doing that. So the Fair Work Week is a part of our liberty, and we need to have good workers and happy workers. Entrepreneurs also need support in being able to do that fairly and clearly.
Thank you very much. Same question for Mr. Juan Joe Harris. What is your stance on the Fair Work Week ordinance?
So the way it's currently written, I think I've had some discussions with a handful of restaurant owners and small businesses. I think there's some changes we have to make the way it's currently written. One of the things that I've learned in my discussions with them is that a lot of the scheduling is done by the employees themselves. And so if we implement it the way it's currently implemented, they're going to have to not allow their staff to be as flexible as their staff would like to be. And that's something that I learned through having meetings and talking to them. I think everyone's, you know, pretty much on both sides about, is in agreement with about 95% of the ordinance. And that's, it's a 5% that we have to work on to get it to a place where it's not a zero-sum game, where it's something that works well for everyone. One of the things I floated as an idea was for some of the businesses that are smaller and maybe opted out if we raise the number of employees kind of to mirror Chicago, is taking like a Fair Work Week pledge. Because most of the businesses that we talk to are pretty good to their workers. But we want to also keep some protections so that if they are not being good employers, that we can do something about it.
Thank you very much. All right, next question will be for Juan Joe Harris. How will you balance the needs of your constituents in the Ninth Ward with the needs of the city?
It's a good question. I think you always have to balance it. You know, I wish there were more easy answers up here sometimes. I think one of the things I pride myself on is being like an active listener. So, you know, just because you hear, you know, what's good for, you know, a certain section of the population might not be overall the best for the city. I think you have to balance that and know when to make those decisions. There are things that like, you know, some of the residents in the west side of the Ninth Ward have had to deal with that I don't think they should. So the environmental justice piece, I think, is an example where I wouldn't budge. But I think it depends on the situation, but it's never an easy answer.
Thank you very much. Same question for Kathy Hayes. How will you balance the needs of your constituents in the Ninth Ward with the needs of the city?
Well, one is, you know, in building any relationship, you have to have, because relationships don't become good out of nowhere. So you have to put in the sweat equity to sit down and have the uncomfortable conversations that will not be easy for everyone, but that you can have come out with some balance and resolution. The goal would be to have all stakeholders to articulate what's going on and their expectations and what can be actually realized for them to come to fruition. When you're here on the council and you have eight other people to communicate with, some of the things are, everybody's not going to agree all the time. But that type of energy can also fuel creativity and that we can balance somewhere in the line to be able to work with each other, come with new solutions, exercise new opportunities.
Thank you very much. All right. Next question will be for Ms. Kathy Hayes. Are you satisfied with the city's relationship with Northwestern University? What might be improved?
I get that Northwestern question a lot lately, and as I'm sure you do too. Northwestern and Evanston community are combined. We are together, we have been a part of each other's lives, and will be into perpetuity. The relationship that we have with Northwestern is one that needs to be developed, one that needs to be responsive to some of the needs. I know many people, as I am in the community, want to talk about this buildup and everything else. The reality is we're guessing. We need to sit down as grown people at a table and discuss with Northwestern our expectations and what their process is to fulfill some of those expectations. In different areas closer to the stadium, it's going to be noise or pollution or environment. In other areas, it's going to be economics and development. In other areas, it's going to be crowd control and safety. So we need to have a good, honest, above-board conversation with Northwestern that is respectful, that is a powerful exchange, that we have an agreement of how we can live in this city, continue to live in this city together as siblings, because that's what we are.
Thank you very much. Same question for Juan Joe Harris. Are you satisfied with the city's relationship with Northwestern? What might be improved?
So I, full disclosure, I'm an employee of Northwestern University. So on any topic that involves them, I recuse myself here on the dais. I've had to do that once, even for something I was very much in favor of. I did not vote, I abstained. One of the things I think, like Kathy said, were intertwined. We should have a symbiotic relationship that where we both benefit as much as possible from one another. One thing that I'm not sure if everyone knows in town, like the leadership at Northwestern has changed recently. President Schill just started in the fall. There was... There was a tragedy around the, his predecessor who unfortunately passed away. So, you know, he's kind of jumping into this relationship, and so I know that I've heard him speak a few times. I like what he said, but I also know that this is kind of a reset, and I'm really hoping that this will, you know, have the beginnings of a more symbiotic relationship going forward.
Thank you very much. All right, next question will be for Juan Gia-Caris. Are you concerned with the rate of crime in Evanston? Is Evanston a safe city?
I think it's overwhelmingly safe for most of its residents. Then again, there, you know, I think most people in this room probably know and were aware of the active situation that was happening yesterday in town. You know, the violence is, you know, the most disturbing part of, you know, the, what we're seeing crime-wise. You know, I think, you know, for example, yesterday, I think our police department did a great job of keeping everyone safe and making sure nothing happened. I think, you know, we have to have a lot of, a lot more youth services. I am also, the gun violence portion, you know, we are municipalities, but we should figure out some things we can do to stop gun violence. I think it's a scary thing when something like that is happening in town. But partnering with social service agencies, youth outreach, I think we have to be kind of all hands on deck to solve those type of crime problems.
Thank you very much. Same question for Kathy Hayes.
Most of, oh, Mr. Hackey, I'm so sorry to cut you off, that was rude of me. Most of what he said is accurate. However, there is another opponent to stopping violence, and people do violent things and do crime because they are economically oppressed, and we need to create a infrastructure so that people have opportunities to be employed, to maintain their families, to maintain their dignity. Yes, we do need social service agencies. Some people are suffering from PTSD. Yes, we do need mental health services, but we also need to booster economics so that people can have and take care of themselves and their families. Without an economic proponent that is infused in the city, we will continue to see crime. We will continue to be victimized by things. Evanston's not used to a lot of crime, not violent crime, not big crimes, but the whole country has become more violent. And I understand that many people had a big reaction to, a negative reaction to the issues of COVID, but the reality is, unless we are able to infuse economics with these other issues, the hands-on-deck that he refers to, our people will still suffer. Everyone in this city will continue to suffer, and they need to be able to be supported, that there's a floor that nobody goes beneath. We have more homeless, we have more mentally ill, we need to do more work.
Thank you. All right, next question will be for Ms. Kathy Hayes, and it's related to gentrification. How would you battle expensive residences in affordable neighborhoods?
You know, mixed housing is a catchphrase, and because the Ninth Ward is predominantly residential, this is a very big issue. To be able to have issues regarding, because there's also another component of density, how people are able to be in one place and still have liberty and thrive. It is a tough fix, because many people don't want certain types of housings next to them and so forth. The codes was one thing, addressing the code issue, our code issue, zoning code issue is a little out of date, and there are some new and more inventive things to do in the area, best practices that have worked throughout the country that we probably need to look at. Another issue is being able to educate people on how housing can be for them in different forms. There is land trust issues that we could possibly do. There are possibilities that we have to open our minds to and possibly open our wallets to if we want people to be able to stay here in Evanston. People can't afford it anymore.
Thank you very much. Once again, same question for Juan Gia-Caris, related to gentrification. How would you battle expensive residences in affordable neighborhoods?
Well, the main thing, I think, is, like Kathy said, zoning is one major component of this. You know, doing things like possibly banning deconversions of taking, you know, too flat and converting it into a single-family home, that's something that should maybe be looked at. There's something we talked about that's coming up in the housing and development, rate of first purchase, when for residents who are in like a rental property, if it is coming on, if it's going to come on the market, giving them the first chance to buy or partner with an affordable housing lender to purchase it themselves. That's something that is done in DC that I think is an exciting thing to dive into here, maybe. But I think the housing studies and the comprehensive plan is a big piece of what we have to do to look and be forward-thinking and kind of explore all these new ideas.
All right, thank you. All right, another question related to communication with constituents, starting with Juan Gia-Caris. Are Zoom meetings exclusive? Does everyone have the capacity to join virtual ward meetings?
That's a good question. I guess if you don't have a computer, I don't know if you could necessarily join. I also don't think necessarily having a meeting at a certain time in a certain place is inclusive to everyone either. You know, there's always going to be somebody that's not able to make it. Interesting question, I'd have to dig into it. I don't know what the actual answer to that would be. We are looking to have meetings in person once, I think, it gets nicer outside. That was kind of my plan going forward with the COVID still being a little bit of a possibility. But yeah, it's a good question.
Thank you very much. Same question for Ms. Hayes. Are Zoom meetings exclusive? Does everyone have the capacity to join virtual ward meetings?
No, everyone does not have the capacity to join board meetings, virtual meetings, for a couple of reasons. And even the school districts had noticed that some children were in a gap because they didn't have access to the internet or access to computers like other people, where if the children didn't have it, their parents didn't have it. So it's a foregone conclusion that everybody doesn't have that type of accessibility. The reality is, you just have to have more than one meeting a month, period. One in person, one on Zoom. It is extra work. I understand it's a part-time job, but it's a servant's work to all the community all the time. You are going to have to do mailers, because some people have issues with accessibility to getting to places, whether the meeting is in person or, as we said before, being online with the meeting. Time schedules are varied all over. So I would think a summary of some kind would be helpful to neighbors. I know it's expensive, but do you want an educated communication with your neighbors or do you want an uneducated communication with your neighbors? That's a value that you need to really understand and decide, and always reaching out is better than not reaching out at all.
Great, thank you very much. All right, and this will be the last question before closing statements, and the question will first go to Ms. Kathy Hayes. And again, a question related to Northwestern. How do you plan to approach negotiations with Northwestern University about the Ryan Field expansion?
The short answer is, as an adult, the grown person that I am, as I would sit and negotiate with anyone, whether it is my butcher, my baker, or my candlestick maker. The second answer to that question is that I would respectfully sit down in a calm, not screaming, shouting thing to really seriously talk about the issues. Yes, the predecessor did make her transition, but these plans were in the works more than two, three years ago. This was an idea that was going to come up. So we're, I'm going to ask Northwestern to have patience with us as much as we need to have patience with them, and for them to take a real serious look at how this can be a pivotal moment, not just for Northwestern, but for all of us. And to be able to sit at the table, you would have to be invited by the group, and the group is council, our corporate council, council, and Northwestern. So summations and guessing and things like that do not serve the community well. You're dividing a community this way. This can be done so much easier with a decent, adult conversation.
Thank you very much. Okay, same last question for Mr. Juan Gia-Caris. How do you plan to approach negotiations with Northwestern University about the Ryan Field expansion?
So this is something that the mayor and city manager Stowe are, have been in ongoing talks with Northwestern, and it's something that when I speak to them, I share what I hear from residents. I mean, I share everything I hear from both sides of the, I don't want to call it an argument, but I try to share all the views that I hear. And so this is something that I'm doing currently. Like, when I meet with them, I kind of give them what I hear, my thoughts, and I think, you know, it's still pretty early in the process, and we'll see how everything shakes out.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so now we've moved to the section for closing statements, so I'll hand the floor over to Ms. Kathy Hayes for a two-minute closing statement.
Let's hope that it's less than two minutes. I must start out with saying thank you again for having us have this opportunity. It has been a long couple of months for all of us that are running in these different positions. We're all exhausted, so you have to forgive some of us, we're trying to figure out what day it is, and we are quickly coming out. The one thing I want to say is, no matter what type of ideas you have or who you're for or who you're against, it doesn't have to be either or. I'm hoping that people will come out and vote, because that is the greatest indicator of liberty, is the greatest indicator of democracy that we have at this tool, at this point in time, and it's a very important tool. Secondly, thank you League of Women Voters for doing what you do best, keeping us all in line and keeping us all on track. I want to take this opportunity to let you know that I am open to issues of change and invention and intervention. I have worked all my life as a career person to do exactly that, to meet people's needs, to help service them and help provide them with the comfort and the liberty that they so deserve and the quality of life that we all deserve. My hope is that many people are interested in the exact same things that I am and that I can learn from them as much as they can learn from me. The goal here is not to just be a one-way communication. When I ask for people's vote, I ask for them to come to City Hall with me, and I think that that is very important, that it is a collective, not just an ego stroke. So I pray that everyone will come out and vote and exercise their right, no matter which way this goes.
Thank you very much. Final closing statement to Mr. Juan Gia-Caris.
I'd just like to thank everyone for inviting me to this. I'm proud of what I've done in my one year's time here on council. I think I've brought about positive change, and I know I will continue to do so if given the chance. If you know me or if you've worked with me, you know that I'm someone who gets things done, and it's really been an honor to serve my community, and I'd be honored to serve for two more. So hopefully, you know, keep me in mind on Election Day, and thank you.
All right, well, thank you both. Let's give a round of applause for our candidates. Thank you very much to both of our candidates, to Kathy Hayes and to Juan Gia-Caris. I would be remiss if I didn't thank all the fine colleagues here from the League of Women Voters, particularly Jennifer O'Neil, Mary Mike Rothschild, Mary Kelly, Katie O'Neil, Judy Hoffman, Georgia Valhos, but I especially want to give a big shout-out to all the Evanston Township High School students who have been helping us today. To Sage Marshall, to Niema York, Micah Williams, Louise Bear, Evelyn Jacobson. I hope that soon we will see you in the position where these candidates are in the future. It's lovely to see you so involved, and don't forget to vote. Election Day is April 4th. I imagine early voting will be starting, so you can early vote, you can vote by mail, you can vote on Election Day. There's really no excuse not to vote, so please participate. Thank you all very much. This will be on the League's website. Say that one more time, the? L W V E dot org. Thank you very much. Have a great weekend, everybody.